Firstly, congratulations on both of your reelection bids and thank you for representing us. We appreciate it and I think we have excellent representation with ourselves and Representative Eklund. This is all new to me, so we're just gonna maybe go over what you all been working on at the state and maybe go over a few things that we have here and go from there, if that sounds okay?
Sure, that works fine.
That works for me. I'll start. What I've been working on is getting my committee organized. We're gonna start hearing bills the first, this, today, this week will be the first group of bills that we're gonna be hearing in my committee and it's gonna be, the first couple of weeks are gonna be focused a lot on workers' rights and workers' comp and some of that as it relates to the pandemic. So I just got done with a staff meeting on going forward for the next two or three weeks. We haven't seen a lot of veterans' bills come in yet and so, but they will, they will start because there's plenty of them out there. So right now we're focused mostly on the labor and industry bills. Personal legislation that I'm working on, I'm working on, number one is broadband. Senator Bach and I introduced a $120 million broadband bill to fund the Department of Broadband for $60 million for each of the, each of the years in the biennium. And then I'm also working on some annual thing that I work on. I'm working on some servity, chronic wasting disease legislation. Actually, I have a hearing in committee today on that. And then we've got, I've got some legislation to expand some of our ATV trails. It's been real slow getting legislation in. The reviser's office is backed up. This year, we had an unusual year, having a special session every, every month. It really put a lot of pressure on our staff. They never got some of the downtime that they normally get between sessions. So things are, things are a little bit, a little bit backed up in that regard. But we're moving forward and it's been an interesting time doing committee by Zoom. So with that, I'll turn over Senator Bach.
Well, thank, thank everybody. Well, I think I'm ahead of most people in the Senate. I have actually had two bills proven. I already had two heard this morning. Is there feedback on?
Yeah, yeah, there is.
Not always though. Let me see if I can do that for all.
Looks like you have two connections. Go on.
Is that any? No. Just turn my. Turn my video down a little.
Looks like, it looks like you're logged in twice. So maybe if one of them was, I don't know.
Yeah, we got, we got a lot of feedback. We can see that all the way back there anyway.
Well, we're on new technology these days.
Well, I had two, two bills heard this morning. One was the ATV bill that Rob had up for ATV trail construction in northeastern Minnesota. And then I had a second one heard that I'm the chief of offer. That's the payroll program, PPP money the businesses received. How'd I get removed?
Tom, we, you were on there twice. This is Jenny. Nice, nice to see you. So we, that's why you were echoing. So I think we got it figured out now.
Okay, am I on still?
Yes, you are.
Now I lost all the video though. Some reason.
You can see and hear ya.
I'm trying to sign back in here.
Must be in because you're in video mode for us and, and we can hear you.
Okay, well, I can't see you, but I guess that's not the worst thing.
Actually, lucky for you.
Well, I, I mentioned I had an ATV bill that Rob and I have. I had that heard this morning in the Environment Finance Committee for some appropriations out of the ATV account for additional trail development in northeastern Minnesota. And then the other bill I had heard this morning will be a lot of interest of businesses around the state. The federal money that businesses receive through the PPP program is exempt from federal taxes, but under state law, people have to pay Minnesota income taxes on it. So what the bill does is, is treats, it's kind of a federal conformity issue so that the state will treat it for tax purposes the same as the federal government. It's pretty expensive. It's over $400 million to do that. So we're gonna have to find some caps or some way to scale it down some. My hope in the end is, is the smaller businesses that end up getting the help because I think they're the ones that need it. So we heard that this morning. I've been working on another bill to exempt from income taxes unemployment that's related to COVID layoffs so that people who were laid off because of COVID don't have to pay income taxes on their unemployment benefits, which under current law they have to do. Not sure how successful we're gonna be on that because that too is probably gonna be pretty expensive when we get it scored by our fiscal analysts but, and the Department of Revenue. But the advantage of both that and the PPP provision and frankly, the ATV bill is their one-time money. So they don't have ongoing costs in the next biennium. They're just one-time costs. We do have some one-time money around. The governor's budget is coming out today. I don't know for sure where he's going on that yet. I know he's proposing some new revenue. I think that's a little challenging in these economic times, but he doesn't have the advantage of being able to wait till the February forecast. His budget had to come out today in statute. Everyone's kind of thinking that the February forecast is gonna bring a little additional revenue. The economy's been improving some and we're all very hopeful, all the states, I think, that the federal government's gonna come through with some help for states and, and some of that's gonna filter down to, to local municipalities, I'm sure. We don't know what that's gonna look like yet, but we'll just have to see. So Thomasoni and I made a break with the DFL caucus and just wanna explain to everybody, there's some people disappointed about that, but the truth is, we did it so we could be more effective for you. There is, it makes no sense for Rob to try to do something like that. He's in the majority. He's in the room when decisions are getting made. David and I were not. The Democrats in the Senate were in the minority. And in the minority, you're not in the room when real decisions get made. You just aren't. You don't have a lot of input. You have a hard time getting your bills heard. Very hard to get anything done. So David and I thought, you know what? We're in the minority anyway, so we're not taking anything away from the Democrats by moving to an independent position and trying to work closer with the Republicans. So we decided to do that. It will serve our constituents up north much more effectively. And at the end of the day, it just feels like that's your job is to serve the district that elected you, you know, whether they voted for you or not. And so that's where we find ourselves. So we're not officed in the Senate building any longer with the other senators. David and I, it was our choice. We made a decision to office in the Capitol. So we're the only two members of the legislature that are actually office, have our permanent offices in the Capitol. We're on the third floor. Look out south over the Capitol lawn. So if this COVID thing relaxes some and you have a chance to get down here, please stop, stop by and say hi. But I don't have a lot more on, on the agenda. It's kind of hard. As you all know, it's hard to know until what we're gonna be able to do until we see kind of what the revenue picture is. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions that you have. I, I should say though, I do think that both LGA and County program here are probably gonna be off limits from any reductions. You know, there's not inflation built into those things like there is into the Pilt formula. But I think, I, I think we're gonna be fine relative CPA and LGA. I haven't sensed any effort to tinker with that. There's always a little rumbling in the Republican caucus to trim the amount of LGA that goes to first-class cities, i.e. Duluth, Minneapolis and St. Paul. But at the end of the day, I don't think even that will happen. So that's kind of the lay of the land.
Um, this is Wade. When are we gonna get to our cabinets?
You know, that's, that's frustrating. I hope mine is still there, you know? I mean, how, how do you know? Actually, I sent a, I sent an email to the ministry yesterday and asked them on my LUP, is there any refund process? Because you're charging me a couple of grand a year for a cabin I can't go to. And that's your decision. I can't go there. And they haven't responded back yet. But if you haven't done it, Wade, there is a refund for fishing or hunting licenses that you bought back in 2020. I actually filed for that yesterday. So I'm hoping that the fact that they're recognizing we couldn't use our hunting and fishing licenses that use in our LP, LUPs is kind of the same situation. But you guys up there would have a better idea talking to the, the customs people if there's gonna be any relief. I'm, I'm kind of hoping that once you have a vaccine, that they'll be willing to let people that have been vaccinated in, but who knows if they're gonna be willing to do that or not. I, I, you know, I'm over 65, so I expect to be in line fairly soon for a vaccine, I think. But if you hear anything, Wade, or any of you, I hear anything on that, it's kind of personally important to me.
Yeah, us too. And I appreciate it. We've had, you know, Tucker, the commercial fisherman on the Canadian side. He's, you know, he goes and checks on things. So far, so good, but you're right. You know, who know?
Yeah, these things that are totally out of your control are real agonizing.
Pretty quiet bunch here, Tom. Thank you, Senator and Representative Eklund. We, we do have a priority list. If you, if you had a few minutes, we would just maybe kind of run through that. We do have some of the department directors available to speak on a few of these things that are, are important to us, if you would have time to do that.
No, that's what I'm here to do.
Thank you. First up is Nathan Lans and Forest. He has, one of the issues or priorities that we may have is a tax forfeited property. And Nathan's on the line if he wants to speak to that, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Shobul, I can speak to that real quickly. Just a couple of the items from the viewpoint of lands and forestry, just to keep it short. There's been a push by AMC and a lot of the counties on these tax forfeited properties. When we do any kind of cleanup or remediation on those properties, we're kind of seeing a trend that when we go to sell these properties is, is kind of the county's remedy to be reimbursed for those costs. We're seeing that the real estate values on those are less than what our cleanup costs are. So there's a, there's a concerted effort, I think, at the AMC level to try to seek some legislative relief, whether it be, you know, I think that's gonna be a three-pronged approach from what I hear. Maybe potential state grants, which may be a tough sell in this session. It may be some statute changes to allow counties to set aside tax forfeited, other tax forfeited revenue into reserve accounts. And the other one, that's a kind of a minor component is when counties, right now when counties get a property that goes tax forfeit that has an underground storage petroleum tank in it, we are not eligible for Petrofund money. So I think these are all things that were gonna be pushed last session but got derailed because of COVID. So I think those are things that'll come up again and I think they'd be a big benefit to, to all counties. The other, the other item that we had from a natural resource or land and forestry standpoint was just with the tough budget times, you know, we, we would respectfully request your guys' continued support for the, for the additional forest road maintenance monies that you guys are both instrumental in getting the Maclack Counties and the DNR a few years ago. So that's, that's all I had.
Thank you, Nathan. Next up would be Lindsey Frank, the county recorder. There, there's a few things there that she's interested in, in speaking about. Lindsey, are you available?
Can I? Thank you. Just really one thing in particular that struck me from the list that I was looking at here was that AMC supports changing state law to no longer require that social security numbers be collected for marriage license applications. That's something that wasn't done for, for historically many years and then popped up sometime back. And we are required to keep those applications indefinitely. So removing the social security numbers from them would help us to have less personally identifiable information to keep track of. And for our purposes, they are not necessary. So we, we support that. That really was the main thing for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Next up, Matt Gwynn, Environmental Services Director. And Matt, are you, are you there?
I am. Thank you. Senator Bach and Representative Eklund appreciate the time. You know, there's a lot of issues that AMC listed and, but a few of the items that I identified would be under the SSTS statewide point-of-sale sewage system inspections. A requirement for that will add costs to the sales of property and will be costly for residents initially, but may solve sewer problems over time. So, so having a point-of-sale sewage inspection, you know, may be something that would be beneficial long-term, but there's some cost involved at the beginning. And then there was an item on underwater management under SSTS, it's support upgrades of sewer systems. Bowser is suggesting a substantial watershed implementation dollars under the one watershed, one plan documents. And, and so if that can be used, if that, that funding can be used for that, I think that'd be a big benefit to our rural locations. So one watershed, one plan and implementation of SSTS upgrades or, or, you know, replacements. Under solid waste management, increased score funding to counties to administer recycling programs mandated by the state is definitely important, especially for us as hauling costs due to our distance to markets are probably higher than most counties in the state. Our actual cost to administer recycling programming is much more than current score funding. And related to that is under the solid waste management tax, tax allocation, supporting allocating 100% of the revenue generated by the solid waste management tax to state and county solid waste and recycling activities is really important. The revenue from the, the sales tax and the fee on debris is, I believe, currently apportioned by law 50% or a minimum of 22 million to the solid waste fund for landfill cleanup and Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, groundwater and solid waste activities, and 50% to the general fund. The legislature then appropriates some portion of that amount to the Office of Environmental Assistance for Solid Waste Activities and provides revenue for block grants to counties for recycling programs. But I believe not 100% is coming back. So there's tax going, you know, going to the state, but some of it's being put into general revenue and it's not all being sent back to, to counties to implement these programs. So, and then under wetlands, you know, there's a lot of different things involved there, but the state assumption of the U.S. Clean Water Act, Section 404 permit program would appear to be a reasonable legislation. And then I had one other question. There was a bill SF number 72, 72. And I think Representative Eklund was an author of that. And it's authorizing repair or replacement of subsurface sewage treatment systems to be financed through the agricultural best management practices loan program, regardless of where in the state the subsurface sewage treatment system is located. And I, I'm not 100% clear on what that means, but it seemed like there was an option for funding on that for our county and for residents of our county. So I wasn't clear on that. Maybe, maybe Representative Eklund could, could enlighten me a little bit on that one.
Did you say House, was that House File 72?
Senate SF number 72.
Okay, I, I don't know if I signed on to that bill that somebody's putting in. I mean, I, I don't, I don't recognize the, I wouldn't be signed on to a Senate file, so.
Right.
I don't know what the file number is. I can look that up. But I, I know, I know being on the Ag Committee, it's probably one of those bills where I brought it, Representative Sandin brought it to me and said that we need to be on this and, and and I signed on as a co-author for him. So I'll have to look into it, into it deeper. But that, that does ring a bell, Matt, when you're talking about it. I think the regardless of area of the state is why I, why I was interested in it. So.
It seemed to make sense if, if I'm reading it correctly, but again, I'm not fully educated about it. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
This is Mary. Also invited the school districts in the chamber. And I don't, I was just gonna see if the school district was on, but I did see Tricia from the chamber.
Jenny, we can't hear you.
Oh, we, we have perhaps, Rob, we may have the school district and the, and the local Chamber of Commerce people on perhaps. We're just gonna see if they can get connected or have any questions or comments.
Good morning. Since I don't see anybody from the school district, I'll pipe in. Good morning, Rob and Tom, Senator Bach, excuse me, and Representative Eklund. Nice to see you and look forward to working with you for another term each. Thank you for some of the recent funding for businesses that the state has been passing out. And Senator Bach, very grateful to hear you talking about pushing through the PPP loan forgiveness and keeping that untaxable income to continue to support our businesses through this pandemic. I think COVID regulation is just obviously continues to be a big topic in the business world about where we sit and where we're going and how we continue to move through this. And knowing that we're currently not only continuing to be under executive order, not legislative direction, but they are kind of in an evergreen status without really any ending for when the next phase or shift for our businesses may be. As you can imagine, is a little bit frustrating for those industries that continue to be impacted and restricted in how they are conducting business and serving their clients today. So I, I guess one of my questions is maybe more even just personal, kind of where each of you stand in regards to some of the activity at the Capitol around that, you know, continued discussion on where COVID regulation sits. Does it continue, continue to be in the executive branch and with the governor? Or is the legislature going to be more active in where that continues to move for us into 2021? And I think tied up with that because as part of how we maybe see ourselves moving through this and into the next phase is around vaccine distribution. And just curious if either of you have any comments about how that's going and continue to go. And I don't know that Minnesota is looking great in how we're distributing that today amongst other states or not. I feel like we had kind of a slow rollout, admittedly, just coming off of vacation. So I've not, there could have been stuff happening last week that I'm not aware of. So I'm curious about that. And I think on a, on a personal maybe-ish more note that again, then, then direct business to impacting us up here, but something that is definitely on the radar of, of a statewide impact potentially is the upcoming trial of George Floyd. That's going to begin in early spring and the impacts of that last summer were great and the great to the metro area and the cost great to our whole state. And I think just curious if either of you have any comments on what the state may be doing to support our communities past that as well as kind of the pandemic. We sort of have those two social issues really impacting life in Minnesota today.
Let, let me try the COVID George Floyd question, George Floyd question first. I think one of the things we're gonna have to do, I mean, I hope, we're certainly gonna have some protests around the George Floyd trial when that starts in, I think, early March. We're probably gonna have to make some money available to the city of Minneapolis for mutual aid. They, they're, they don't have a big enough police force to, to deal with this. So, and we can't expect neighboring cities to deploy therefore and not get reimbursed for it. So I do think there'll be an effort to put some money together, not so much for the city of Minneapolis, but to cover the cost of surrounding communities, assuming that they're gonna be called in to supply some mutual aid to the city. So I don't, I don't know where that money's gonna come from yet. We're still kind of talking that through, but there's stations going on, the House and the Governor. Try and get ready for that because we certainly, Minneapolis, Minneapolis just won't have enough people to cover it. We don't expect other communities to spend their money to deal with a problem in another state. So on the COVID thing, you know, the law is what it is relative to emergency powers. And so the governor has those powers. Fortunately, he's starting to relax some of the pensions on pools, on restaurants and bars. And, and I think he'll continue to do that. The vaccine rollout's been very frustrating for everybody, I know, including the administration. Seems like that's getting better and it seems like we're getting additional doses from the federal government now. I, I think one of the challenges is, I was up to the retirement community where my mother-in-law lives and here in the Twin Cities the other night, she's 97. And I, I met with some of the staff up there and I asked if they had had an opportunity to get shots for all of the staff that work in the long-term care facility. Some of the residents are in independent apartments, some are in assisted living, some are in insurance and care. And I was disappointed to learn that yes, they did have the vaccines available, but 23% of the employees in those, in that facility decided not to take it. That's a problem. And when I expressed I thought that was a problem, they said, well, we're actually pretty good compared to other places. They said there are long-term care facilities where as many as half of the employees that work there don't want to get the vaccine. You know, if we're gonna get our arms around this problem, we are gonna have to get large numbers of people vaccinated. But something in the neighborhood of 70 to 80% of people, if we're gonna get beyond this. But I think that's the one kind of unknown right now is, I don't know how many people are just gonna refuse the vaccine and what impact is that gonna have on getting control of the pandemic so that people like Wade and I can get to our cabins in Canada and we can open the border up. And I know that's awful important to people that live in falls. A lot of people running north of the border. I don't think Joe's gonna open that up until he sees us getting our arms around people in this country. And I don't blame, you know, they don't have a healthcare system that can deal with major outbreaks. It's just not big enough. So Rob, can I add anything?
Well, I need to apologize to everybody. I lost all the audio connection, so I had to get out of the meeting and get back in. So I, I missed right after, right after Tricia talked about the mandates and closing down the government and stuff like that, emergency powers. We do have a select committee that's working on Chapter 12 right now that, that is how we're gonna tackle whether, how we're gonna deal with these emergency powers. I don't know what's going on with the Senate, but Representative Plousky and, and some various members of both sides of the aisle have been appointed to that committee. So that's, that's what we're working on when, when Chapter 12 was put together. Didn't have a pandemic in mind. It was more on the mind of floods, riots, tornadoes, that sort of thing. So, so we do have a committee looking at it and we'll see what their report's gonna look like when they get their work done.
To, to kind of pile on, I, I do think something's gonna change with emergency. Um, the, to, to kind of pile on, I, I do think something's gonna change with emergency, the governor's emergency powers. I think it needs to change, like Rob said. No one ever contemplated we were gonna be in a situation like this. It's all been kind of a, emergencies have been kind of a short-term thing. And the legislature has some leverage, you know, governors never want to give up any of their power. The legislature has some leverage on the governor on this emergency power. And it is the fact that emergency, that's an account that helps pay for disasters is odd money. Only when the additional money can be put in there for a governor to respond to future emergencies is that the legislature appropriates it. And I'm pretty sure the governor's not gonna want to end this session with no money in the emergency, uh, management account. Because things happen, you know, what, it's a tornado or, or even a small flood and the money that is supposed to be able to respond to the small, uh, super event or state or community. So things, changes will happen. I think some, do need to happen. I think anybody ever contemplated emergency order gonna get used in this way for, you know, what's coming up on a, a year. Uh, so having some guardrails around a, a, a future governor's authority is not gonna affect, uh, this, uh, governor or this pandemic probably, but, uh, it, we, we need to take another look at it. These are totally new circumstances from what we've contemplated.
Thank you.
Welcome home, Trish.
Good morning. And I, I appreciate the recognition brought up both by the county and the senator and representative this morning about Canada, because that really has been an impact on our businesses up here. And, you know, talking with some of those in the hospitality, we're quite honestly projecting, predicting, expecting unfortunately, another summer of border closure. And that's gonna be rough. That's, that's gonna be rough. So aid that has been received by both the federal and the state governments have been beneficial. But, you know, every time we get one of those checks, the discussion is, how long is this bandage supposed to cover for? Right? Because we just keep it, you know, it's the great unknown. And that's a totally rhetorical question. Nobody, you know, we're, this is brand new to everybody and we're feeling out how this is going. But it feels like at some point, money is going to be limited on what's able to continue to be doled out to the businesses. And so their only recourse is hopefully to try to open, because I think our consumers have been responsive, especially up here in the various ways that our businesses are available to do business with them. And so it's, it's really boosted online and different kind of takeout and delivery creativities of some of our local businesses. And so we all just, I think, look forward to, right, the, the next stage of this and, and greater movement and freedoms for us. Yeah. But thank you, Ginnabough, for your service. Um, we look forward to a productive legislative session for you. The broadband initiatives, the ATV initiatives, those also benefit our, our business community. And so we're grateful to see continued support in those areas for our community as well.
We, we would agree, Trish. Thank you. Uh, any, anybody, anyone else have anything for Senator Bach or Representative Eklund?
I have a, I have a question. I don't, I was listening to the news the other day and it was the, uh, coming out on the electric cars and the possible mandate by the EPA that Minnesota mandates how many electric cars have to be sold. And if this is based on the California rules and if the Californias changes their rules, if we go with this and our rules automatically change, uh, I s, I'm questioning that one. And I guess, uh, if, uh, if they're looking at doing it, um, I don't think we should have, that we should be tied in with the California and any regulations.
Well, well, Wayne, that's a, that, that, that's a good point. Uh, the, the PCA is going through, uh, the rulemaking process. You know, the legislature gives, uh, agencies rulemaking authority to do some specific things. And, uh, this unfortunately does fit under the PCA's rulemaking authority. So I believe they're all for public comment now. There, there kind of are two issues here. One is, uh, uh, a requirement that more electric cars are gonna have to be on the lots of dealers around the state. Of course, the dealers don't like that. And, and frankly, kind of the, and I'm, and I support the idea of electric cars. I'm not sure how well they work in a, in a cold weather state, uh, not as well in a warmer one, I'm sure. And nobody knows that better than the National Falls. People spend money testing batteries up there for a reason. But, uh, I, I think the problem is they're working, uh, the PCA is working on the supply side, wanting to make more vehicles available. That doesn't do any good if people don't want to buy them. It just seems like we ought to be working on the demand side and, and create some incentives for more people to buy electric cars, rather than just forcing them on dealers and them having a bunch of inventory that they can't sell. But the bigger problem with the rulemaking is the point that Wayne made. Uh, Minnesota adopting the California clean car standards, that's problematic, because it, it, we're not California. Our environments and, and temperatures aren't like California. Uh, and, uh, linking us to California emission standards and any changes that they make down the road, we automatically would adopt, I think is problematic. I, I'm not too interested in California driving the policymaking in Minnesota, but it's part of the rulemaking process. So we've been looking for a way to try and get the legislature involved in that, because, um, under the rulemaking, it just goes to an administrative law judge and he makes a decision whether, uh, the rules should be adopted or not. So trying pretty hard to figure out how to get the legislature engaged in that conversation. But I don't know what the final outcome's gonna look like yet, but I, I share your concern about going with it. And that doesn't mean I'm against electric cars, because I frankly, I'm not. I mean, where they make sense, I think people, uh, should buy them. But people should be able to make their own decision about whether it makes sense for their family to own one or not.
Yeah, uh, yeah, thank you on that, because that's what bothered me the most is that some other states is making rules for Minnesota. And this is a big issue and, uh, and electric cars are coming, but, uh, you know, there has to be a little bit of, uh, local involvement at that too, or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Anyone else have anything? Well, again, thank you for your service and, and your time today. And I know you'll continue to represent us the best you can. And, uh, the legislature, I guess, how things go. So, but we, we appreciate you taking the time today, uh, Senator and Representative. Hopefully we see you in person soon.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And I wanna just let you guys know, I apologize. For some reason, I've dropped, dropped in and out of this thing. But, uh, you guys all have my cell phone number, so you know how to get ahold of me. So, um.
Yeah, we got your, we got your number.
We can have a conversation anytime. And I, I do appreciate working with, uh, which obviously is near and dear to my hea, heart, but, uh, all the county boards that I work with, I enjoy it. It's, uh, folks are the ones that make the, Thomas said this many times, you guys are the closest to, uh, to the people and as far as what's going on. And you, you're our conduit of information. So thank you.
Thanks to eight hundred, Rob, on this one. Thanks to both of you.
So, so Wade, if I get any, if I get any kind of a response from the ministry on my, my request that I sent them yesterday by email, uh, I will forward it on to you and you can share it with people.
Oh, please do. Thank you. Yeah, it's a big issue for people like us. I know that. Well, well, thank, thanks to both of you and, and have a, a good part, a, a good day.
Stay warned.
Actually, Senator, one more thing on that. That's, I've been surprised at the number of people that mentioned that we either have relatives, mothers, fathers, sisters out there that have had, haven't been able to get up there in a year. A friend of mine said his son and they, uh, somebody snuck up there and they didn't make it back. But, uh, I guess it's not something you wanna do. So.
All right. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Let's, let's stay in touch.
You guys, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Be safe.